Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to this special thematic session on space capacity building in the 21st century. My name is Stefano Ferretti. I'm the co-author and editor of the book "Space Capacity Building in the 21st Century", that I prepared as a resident fellow at European Space Policy Institute in Vienna, the leading European think tank for space policy. I've been working there seconded as a space policy officer by EAS headquarters until 2018, with my main research interest focusing on governance, innovation, and future space-based services. In the frame of these activities, I initiated and managed the Space for Sustainable Development Programme of activities that resulted in the publication of the yearbook on space policy 2016, "Space for Sustainable Development", published by Springer. In the context of this programme, I also developed a number of contributions towards Unispace+50 that took place in June 2018, and you will hear more about that during my presentation today. As well, I established a forum on space and Satcom 45G in the context of connected mobility in Brussels, with the involvement of the European Union and the number of private actors, both on space and industry side. Before that, I covered various positions, both in space agencies and space industry, ranging from energy management and infrastructure management to the development of scientific payloads for the International Space Station. So I worked there as a space project manager, liaising with international space agencies such as NASA, JAXA, and Roscosmos, as well as research institutions and industries. For this work, I received also the NASA International Space Station Vehicle Office Award in 2006, as well as the International Astronautical Federation Napolitano Award for Microgravity Research in 2002. I hold a PhD with dissertation on innovative technologies for space habitats, a master of engineering from the University of Bologna, and a master of space studies from the International Space University. I also attended executive programmes in space policy and law, innovation and entrepreneurship at George Washington University in the United States, as well as Massachusetts Institute of Technology. I authored a number of articles, reports, and papers in various scientific areas, and I'm a member of the Professional Engineers Associations of Italy, as well as the IIF Committee on Space Applications, and I represented ESPY for three years at the United Nations Committee on the Peaceful Uses of Outer Space. The second panelist of today is distinguished researcher Shuba Satyendra Naths. Perhaps, Shuba, you can turn on your video, please. Shuba is an oceanographer from India. In particular, she studied at the Cuchine University of Science and Technology. She holds a doctorate from France, Université Pierre-Marie Curie in Paris, and she worked in many countries around the world, being India, France, and Canada, before moving to the Plymouth Marine Laboratory in the United Kingdom. Her main research interests are marine optics, remote sensing, marine primary production, biological/physical interactions in the ocean, climate variability and climate change. She's also the science leader of the Ocean Color Climate Change Initiative of the European Space Agency, and she worked for many years as Executive Director of the Partnership for Observation of the Global Oceans, devoting her time there to improving international coordination and collaboration, as well as capacity building for ocean observations. Most of her research work has had an open ocean focus, and her interest in issues of ecosystem health and in coastal and inland water bodies was stimulated by learning about the degradation of the water quality in Vembabhad Lake in Kerala, India, and its implications for human health. So I'm pleased to welcome Shuba in the panel with us today. Welcome, Shuba.
Thank you, Stefano.
And the third panelist of today debating on space capacity building is Antonio Martello. Please, Antonio, can you turn on your camera? Antonio is the head of the concurrent engineering facility and is also a space system engineer in the German Aerospace Centre, BLR, in Bremen, Germany. He works there since 2014. His present work focuses on concurrent engineering study operation as team leader, concurrent engineering process development, the responsibility for the concurrent engineering facility, and the acquisition and execution of projects and studies, as well as the dissemination of results and external communication. Antonio holds degrees in telecommunications engineering from the European University of Madrid in Spain, space system engineering from Isae Supero in France, and in radio astronomy and space science from Charles University of Technology in Sweden. So welcome with us, Antonio.
Thank you.
So I will now move on to the first presentation of today, which is my presentation as an introduction to the topic of space capacity building. So I'm honoured to introduce a book that was published this year by Springer on "Space Capacity Building in the 21st Century". This book is a collective exercise of many experts from various regions and even continents on this planet. These contributions ranges through various topics, and the important element is that they all fit together in an overall presentation of what is possible to develop in terms of space capacity building nowadays. I would like to start my introduction by mentioning a few elements that in the last very few years came up as new elements in the general landscape. So the first is that the United Nations published in 2015 the Agenda 2030 for Sustainable Development, as well as the Conference of the Parties 21 and the Paris Agreement were established in 2015. So there is here a strong focus on development of solutions for the planet that can ensure a sustainable development, as well as tackle climate change as a pressing issue. The second element is that NASA developed a new capability to travel in space, the SLS, as well as also SpaceX as a new entrant have plans to travel to other celestial bodies, including Mars. The European Union, at the same time, developed a space strategy with a focus on the citizens, and this strategy is currently under implementation. There is also a new vision in Europe coming from the European Space Agency in particular, focusing on United Space in Europe, Space 4.0, and even the Moon Village. In parallel, China is having ground plans and is building a space station in lower Earth orbit, which is currently under construction. And last but not least, a couple of years ago, we had the Unispace+50, so the 50th celebration of the first Unispace took place, where four pillars for humanity were identified and aiming at really adding space benefiting all humankind. So in this context, you can see on the right side three main global agendas that have been put forward by the United Nations and all its member states. As I mentioned, the Sustainable Development Agenda 2030, the Paris Agreement, and the COP21, and the Framework for Disasters Risk Reduction. On the left side, you see how space is somehow matching these challenges with solutions. So you see for disasters, for instance, the International Charter for Space and Major Disasters. You see the new strategy on space, Space 4.0, addressing through various programmes the global agendas. As we know, for instance, on climate change, space can tackle and provide information on more than 50% of the essential climate variables. And then you see also the Group on Earth Observations that is pulling together resources from all the actors, space agencies, industries, and research centres around the world to tackle the most pressing challenges of our time. So we have, in fact, here a global community, and the world is more and more interconnected. And this global community is developing very fast. In order to develop in a sustainable manner, there are four elements to keep into account. So economic development should go in parallel with social inclusion, environmental sustainability, and good governance. So all these elements have been discussed in the frame of a conference that took place in ESPY in 2016 on "Space for Sustainable Development", just after the 2030 Agenda went out. And the outcomes of these are captured in the Springer Book "Yearbook on Space Policy 2016". What I want to underline is the importance of having both the development actors and the space actors around the table, and this is what was done in this occasion, having both advanced research centres and university dialoguing with, for example, non-governmental organisations, or, for instance, you can see here, the African Union, space industry, but also international financing institutions like the World Bank. And you can see Medicins à Frontière, ISRO, where a very, very good tele-education and telemedicine programme is being implemented in India, as well as the European External Action Service of the European Union. So the basic ingredients to build capacity, particularly in this century, is really to have these different actors discussing and planning activities together, identifying synergies. So just to name a few, you can see here the United Nations, space agencies, development banks, industry societies, NGOs, unions, African Union, and European Union and states. The three pillars around which such dialogue could be established are science, technology, and applications. So in order to build space capacity around the science, it's very important to underline the importance of open data policies, such as the one offered by Copernicus, for example, but to have also user platforms that allows for research best practices to be disseminated, as well as citizen science, in order to engage more and more the citizens in the development of scientific knowledge. In this sense, it's very important also to share lessons learned from space research, to outreach the results, to promote scientific research at large, and to establish international collaborations, such as, for example, the excellent one that was established since more than 20 years on the International Space Station. Concerning the technology aspect, there are a lot of new technologies coming up. So now the challenge is really how to make sure that these technologies can be embedded or can be, let's say, integrated in the overall development cycles of space capabilities for the future. So two elements are certainly connectivity and Earth observation, but you see here also drones, which are a new element that could provide valuable data that can be integrated with the satellite data. There is also an ongoing effort on open innovation with spinning and spin-off processes between space actors and non-space actors, but ITAC, for example, technology can be spinned into space products, and this can shorten the development cycle or even allow for the development of innovative solutions offered by CubeSats through key and adding technologies. And the last pillar, very important, is the applications pillar. So in this area, there are new entrants in space that are here to create, develop, and provide the business services thanks to very peculiar business models. There is also the element of big data and artificial intelligence that is offering a completely new proposition to the development of applications and services in the space domain. And we see also the emergence, particularly this year, of EAS services. A strong focus in this area has been put by also a joint cooperation between various space agencies around the world. And the element of co-design services with the users is something that should be a priority. So in the preparation of the Unispace+50, a process was put in place that was seen as an opportunity to further demonstrate the broad societal benefits of space as a source of innovation, inspiration, integration, and investment, particularly to strengthen unified efforts at all levels and among all relevant stakeholders in addressing the overarching long-term development concern of society. And so within this process, a dialogue with the relevant stakeholders was established. It's very important that this dialogue continues, and, for instance, taking into account also innovative developments, such as the African Union's space policy and strategy that was prepared in 2016, or the Agenda 2030, where the space actors play an essential role, including in particular the United Nations Office for Outer Space Affairs, but also the new entrance in space, so new private actors and NGOs. In this context, four main areas have been identified, and they are matched in the book as well. So the book provides a structure around these four topics. What I want just to mention here very briefly is that around the topic of innovation and exploration, we will hear more from Antonio later today, particularly on innovation methodologies. But there are also new business models. So, for example, private industry developing services that could be offered as customers to the space agencies, even for exploration missions, space exploration missions. Or in terms of space for global health, for instance, a partnership between the WHO, the World Health Organisation, space agencies, and the United Nations Office for Outer Space Affairs was put together, an initial conference in August 2017. There is an ongoing dialogue around this topic. Concerning climate change and resilient society, certainly the International Conference on Sustainable Development that takes place in New York at Columbia University is a very important platform to really understand what are the challenges particularly related to climate change and how space can react to that. And finally, the Austria Symposium that takes place every year in Graz is an essential instrument to really understand how to best access space for anybody in the world and with different capabilities. So taking into account all these elements, a framework was built around these topics, and a larger conference at the time of the Scientific and Technical Subcommittee of the year that was 2018, in preparation of the Unispace+50, took place in ESPY on the 3rd of February. Now, what I want to mention here is the fact that the four topics were addressed really in depth. And if we start from innovation and exploration, you can see that we have new entrances, such as, for instance, Sierra Nevada with the Dream Chaser, establishing a collaboration with the United Nations to offer its own capabilities to conduct microgravity research to any country in the world under the premises and the sponsorship of this joint programme with UN. But there is also, for instance, the KiboCube programme between JAXA and the UN, and the number of CubeSats have been already released from the Kibo module on the International Space Station, offering the possibility to various countries. I just name a few, Mauritius or Kenya, to really have their own CubeSat with capabilities designed for the users and for the specific country. But also trends have been discussed and innovative solutions, as well as possibilities, for instance, to conduct commercial exploitation on the ISS for small experiments such as the Ice Cubes. The second element, the second section that is also explored in the book, deals with space for global health. So in this case, we had the honour to have Chaki Mukai, former chairman of the STAC of UN COPUS, but also astronaut from JAXA, that introduced the element of how space can truly benefit global health in various areas, starting from technology and going to services and applications. We also had the very important role of space and NGOs, such as Medicins à Frontière, debated, and you can see a very good contribution from Edi Troganoff on this topic. Finally, the fact that we have a Concarda Station in Antarctica based where we can conduct experiments testing the long-term conditions for exploration missions was addressed by Beth Ely, former ESA medical doctor in Antarctica. But we also have another element, which is certainly very important when we think about the building space capacity in this century, which is how to address and tackle climate change and how to make our societies more resilient. So to tackle this topic, we were supported very strongly by Ana Avila, delegate from Costa Rica, which is a country with a very strong environmental care and attention since many years. And we explored also what type of space activities and programmes are being coordinated by the World Meteorological Organisation of the United Nations, as well as what could be the impact, for instance, of climate variability on cities. So we had the user perspective here described by Euricee, or we have the excellent contribution linking resilient societies, health, and climate change from Shuba Satyendra Naths that will be explored in the next presentation. And finally, we analysed what are the frameworks around which we can really design space capacity building initiatives, programmes, activities, starting from the ESA catalogue on the Sustainable Development Goals, going to the UN Regional Centre in Nigeria, and how they are building links between the local ecosystem, which is both scientific and business-oriented, going to, for example, the Network of European Regions, using space to NGOs dealing with the younger, youngest contributions to the space environment, such as the Space Generation Advancement Council, or the perspective of the European Union External Service on international cooperation and the science diplomacy, for example. Finally, very, very relevant contribution from Paolo Giommi on the ASI Italian Space Agency Open Universe Initiative, which offers the possibility to scientists all over the world to access data from astronomical observations carried out all over the world on a global scale. So here you see that many stakeholders dealing with space capacity building have been addressed, and they contributed. So you will find more details in the book on each of them. But also, if you plan to build your own space capacity building roadmap, you can take into account that there is the possibility to engage with such stakeholders, and of course, also beyond this. So all in all, the book provides three key messages, if you want, at three different levels. So first of all, it provides an overview of the national and international policy frameworks associated with space capacity building and the rationals for their adoption on a global scale. So this is both useful for the implementers, but also for the policymakers themselves that may want to design a new policies to address the topic of space capacity building. The second element is that the book examines examples, very concrete examples, of space capacity building efforts across different regions and implemented by a range of actors, from agencies to industries and NGOs. This is very important because there are peculiarities, specificities in the different regions. So it's very important to start from the needs in the field, to listen to the users, to look at the potential applications, and then from there, building up the programme and identify the synergies with other actors on a global scale. And the third element is that the book also highlights space capacity building programmes that can empower the international community towards accessing all the benefits that space assets and data can offer to the economy and society. And in this case, it's really a holistic approach that is proposed here. So really, anybody can benefit of this new approach. So you see here some of the examples I already mentioned. You see the Open Universe, you see the KiboCube, the Sierra Nevada, the Concarda Station, the drones. But also, on the top right, you can see how humanitarian operations were carried out before the use of satellite maps, and how now, with the availability of Copernicus data, for example, which is free, full, and open to anybody in the world, how this can be enriched with also other GIS layers and can really serve in the field as a very helpful tool, both after disaster strikes, but also during the sustainable development efforts. And you see on the top left, a pyramid of knowledge, if you want. So if in the 80s, from space, we were acquiring data and information, and then at the beginning of this century, we started analysing all these data, we are now entering a phase where we are interpreting the data, even with artificial intelligence, which is a little bit, we can say, the new frontier, where we apply big data analytics, we merge data, so we apply big data fusion technologies between space data and in situ data. And the next level will be to actually produce knowledge out of this, even in this way, with this approach. So what we have seen as a key ingredient so far is that when we talk about space capacity building or capacity building in general, we really need to have the two communities dialoguing together. We need to establish very strong mechanisms for exchange of information between the space community, which is very scattered. There are really a multitude of sectors and actors within also this community. Some of them have an institutional character, such as space industry, but we have space agencies, but we have also industry and academia. And there are already also some mechanisms of coordination. For instance, UNOSA is the And there are already also some mechanisms of coordination. For instance, UNOSA is the Secretariat of the ICG for the GNSS systems that are being deployed all over the world from various countries. Private actors have their own forum to debate about connectivity, for instance, or the European Union is developing the Copernicus Program, which is a European program that is offered on a global scale, on a on a free and full and open data policy base, and the GO that established the Global Earth Observation System of Systems. And we need to build bridges with the development actors, which which represent in a way, you can say, the development side, the demand side of the of the equation. So there we have UN specialized agencies, but also national governments, citizens, non-governmental organizations, aid organizations, intergovernmental organizations in the field, or, for example, the Office of the UN Special Representative for the STGs and condevelopment consultancy firms as well. So you see here an example, this is just a draft example that came up of the various discussions when we were assembling the book. And you see at the center, the key actors, so the citizens, the community of citizens, the civil society, the states, the union of states and the United Nations. On the left side, you see what are the space technologies or space services that can be put in place as instruments to serve the actors at the center. And on the right, you see the type of services that could be could be developed to tackle the the great challenges that we have there, starting from connectivity-enabled integrated services to humanitarian activities to the Sendei Framework for Disaster Risk Reduction, to the COP twenty one Agreement on Climate Change. For example, there is a very good program on GMS in Africa, and finally, the UN Agenda twenty thirty. But what we also want to underline with the key messages in the book is that we are here in the twenty first century. And so there are new paradigms related to particularly to innovation that needs to be taken into account and that could greatly benefit the new programs around capacity building. So we can really think of a new way of carrying out these activities and projects. And how can we do that? Well, first of all, the space realm is not anymore driven by competition, but is now, we can say, an environment of co-petition, where there is collaboration as well as competition together at the same time. The second element is that open innovation and the open service innovation is a new way of doing and carrying out innovation. So larger firms can team up with smaller firms, with startups, with innovative ideas. And 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 the aim of that is to create a sort of digital organization that can really use the knowledge in an integrated way, in an integrated, we can say, team of teams, for example, where we apply concurrent design, as Antonio will tell us in a moment, but also design thinking together, in the end, co-creating the technology, the satellites, the exploration missions, the applications and the services of the future. We also have innovative manufacturing processes, such as, for example, 3D printing or additive layer manufacturing, as is more appropriate to say, that are disrupting the way we are building space technologies today. There are elements in addition that we need to take into account. So we are discovering, for instance, exoplanets. So the our knowledge of the universe is going well beyond of what we we simply knew few years back. And you can see on top here a control center for the first ERS satellite of ESA. And you see below the very small cube set that is being deployed and that can monitor the Earth nowadays with this miniaturized technology. So there are platforms that needs to 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 work efficiently when we want to innovate. And the first thing is that we need to establish a strong dialogue with the users. So for example, as we we did in Espy at the time with Sustainable Development or with five G connectivity, it's very important to understand what are the needs and the constraints of the different actors. But also, I want to underline the importance, for instance, of the UN Spider, the Platform for Space-Based Information for Disaster Management and Emergency Response, which plays a key role for any country in the world using space technologies as well. So finally, I will conclude with this slide. What I want to sum up is that global cooperation is the essential element in this twenty first century to really develop a sustainable and long-term space capacity building. We need the three key ingredients, if you want. So the first one is the early user involvement. So whomever will have to use in a way or the other the benefits of space or the space services or the space technologies needs to be involved at the beginning of the of the planning of the activities. Therefore, stakeholders' platforms are very important. The engagement with the user should be maintained across the duration of the project of the program so that the continuous feedback and an agile development program is put in place. And the last point is that the thematic focus is also very important. You see in the book, we have explored only four topics. But it's very important that the focus is kept on on each of these topics. Of course, more topics can be added. But I would suggest that if you want to build your own roadmap on capacity building, you start from one topic, having the right stakeholders and the right users around the table. And then you you build your program, and then next time you you will address a new sector and and so on. The the process, the design process should be also in this phase, and this is the key, the second key ingredient, should be an end to end the design process. And we will hear more from Antonio, what technologies and methodologies we have, like open innovation, design thinking or co-creation ways of doing. But what is really important is that from the beginning to the end, there is a thoughtful program that goes across all the phases. And and this will ensure the success of the of the project at the end. Finally, innovative programmatic frameworks are needed. I mean, we see that, for instance, at uniSpace plus fifty, already a lot of actors were were providing their views and their insights. We have a new private sector, which is very, very, very dynamic and active, as well as NGOs are playing really a key role and 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 they are really utilizing space in in innovative ways that needs to be considered. So when designing these innovative programmatic frameworks, whether you are a space agency or you are an industry or you are a member state, you can take into account three elements, that the capacity building is by nature intersectorial, therefore also interdisciplinary, is interinstitutional. So states, NGOs, citizens, so different types of organizations can really contribute in designing such programs. And international cooperation and information sharing is an essential element to the success of of such an initiative. So with this, I conclude my presentation. I will leave the questions at the end for the panel, together with my distinguished colleagues. And I would like now to hand over to Shuba Satyendranath for a very valuable contribution to the discussion today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stefano, and thank you, thank you for including me in this webinar. And thank you all for attending this panel discussion. Good day to all of you. And I am trying to share screen. If I can only find my talk. Okay. Can you please, somebody confirm that you can see my slides and hear me talk?
Yes, everything is perfect, Shuba. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you very much for this opportunity. And I would like to talk briefly about how we can use satellite observations in the case in addressing issues related to waterborne diseases and especially in the context of climate perturbations and extreme weather stress. It is, of course, based on work carried out by a number of people. And I have included here as co-authors the main people on whose work I have borrowed here. So and the work that at the talk that I will present here has two components, more or less. I would like to begin with some experiences that we've had dealing with the use of space in addressing waterborne diseases in a large lake in the southwest coast of India. And I would like to conclude with some personal thoughts on what capacity building means to me in this context. So the context we have here is of waterborne diseases. But let us not forget that we need water for life as we know it. We depend on it for just about everything, for food, for even our culture, our entertainment, our communications, our transport, just about everything. And in this form, water is the giver of life. But there is another side to water, and that is the angry side. And when water is in its angry mode, it takes away life. It has can unleash tremendous fury on the population and on the ecosystems on which we depend. So the most of these are examples of a what they call the hundred-year, once in a century floods that occurred in Kerala in the year twenty eighteen. So when we have floods of this nature, and the expert opinion is that with changing climate, the frequency and the intensity of extreme events such as floods or droughts will increase with time. What we need is a method, first of all, to identify which are the affected areas. So in the case of floods and in the case of Wembenad Lake, the Sentinel One SAR data could provide information on the flooded areas. And that is the first step that we need for governments or responsible agencies to respond to the disaster and undertake remedial and mitigating actions. So this would be the first step towards building resilience that Stefano was talking about, resilience for the society. So this is based on SAR data, that means microwave sensing. But microwave SAR data are not available on a daily basis. So within our project, we also looked at the possibility of supplementing microwave data with optical data for the region where we have developed a method based on earlier work, of course, for indicating areas where we are seeing excess flood, excess water, or in other words, floods. So in the case of an emergency, there are ways in which space technology can help us address the immediate problem. But there is also an ever-present and continuing danger that we face from natural bodies of water. And that is related to waterborne diseases. I have some examples here. On the left-hand side, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but here on the left-hand side, we have the electron micrograph of Vibrio cholerae responsible for cholera epidemics and pandemics the world over. And this is a bacterium that depends on water for its survival. If you look, think about vector bone diseases associated, for example, with mosquitoes. Mosquitoes also need water in one part of their life cycle. And mosquitoes are carriers for a large number of diseases, including malaria, dengue, chikungunya, Zika and others. In the Wembenad Lake, we have a problem with water invasive species of plants. In the particular example is of water hyacinths, which is also known to be associated with Vibrio cholerae. But these species also create stagnant pools of water, which facilitate breeding of mosquitoes. So the question then is, can we identify floating algae from space? In fact, there are methods for mapping them from space. There is one example here. This is a method called Floating Algal Index. And the inset I have here is of a young girl trying to collect water for cooking from this Wembenad Lake infested by the water hyacinths. But if we in many of these applications, it is important to make sure that the general algorithms that are available from remote sensing are tailored for the local application envisaged and that they meet our requirements for accuracy and precision. But these methods are also improving the some commercially available data with a resolution of one meter or three meters. If you use those now, and this is another image of Wembenad Lake here, we can practically see the floating vegetation. In this figure, you can, or image, you can see the floating vegetation hugging this coast here. And there are patches over here. And this is a man-made dam that's in the local language. I mean, even in English, we called it a bund, Tanir Mukam Bund. And you can see how the environment changes immediately to the north and south of the Bund. So what you see here then is whether the circulation pattern of the lake has an influence, and I'm sure it has, on the distribution of the floating vegetation. They, it's understood that saline water can destroy these plants. So one of the measures, remedial measures being discussed is to is to open this dam so that saltwater from the sea up north can enter this part and then get rid of the floating invasive algae. And if such measures are attempted, then we can use satellite remote sensing to check effectiveness of remedial measures. As part of a study of the Wembenad Lake, our colleagues from India have carried out extensive sampling of stations across the length of the lake, looking at the presence or absence of Vibrio cholerae bacteria in the water. What we have learned from these experiments is that, in fact, the probability of finding Vibrio in this lake is quite high. The lowest is about forty percent, and then it goes as high as one hundred percent towards the northern part of the lake, which is surrounded by a high-density city. We are, INSEE2 observations have also shown that the pathogenic strains of the bacteria that are behind the epidemics of this, of cholera disease are also present in the water. So, if we have this kind of information, can we then use satellite observations to convert that into a risk map? For the Vembenad Lake, it appears that such a method might be possible because the probability of encountering the Vibrio cholerae is related to the chlorophyll concentration in the water, the main pigment in the floating, sorry, in the microscopic plants natural to the aquatic environment, phytoplankton. So, if you plot the chlorophyll concentrations against the Vibrio probability, we find very good relationships. But interestingly, the relationships are quite distinct between the northern and southern parts of the lake. So, very local information. If we have that, we can then generalize it using satellite-derived chlorophyll maps to generate risks of cholera for the entire lake. Of course, what we learn is that the more we learn, the more we understand that there is a lot more to learn. For example, in this context, we are trying to understand why the population, why the relationship differs so much between the north and the southern parts of the lake. One of our ideas is that it is related to the community structure of the microscopic plants in the water, and we are exploring that in more detail. But temperature is another environmental quality, environmental property that is known to have an effect on the distribution of infectious diseases. This slide, including figures from a recent paper by Baker Austin and colleagues for the North Atlantic and the North Sea, they pointed out that the North Atlantic is facing more frequent and higher incidence of heat waves in, in recent years. And if you look at the temperature anomaly in the region, this is in the case of a town of, in Sweden, you see that the water temperature is very closely related to the number of cases of Vibrio-related diseases reported in the region. So, it's been suggested that increasing temperatures will have an effect on higher incidence of waterborne diseases. And this is an example from the temperate waters. But what about the tropics? If you come back to the Vembenad Lake, in the bottom left-hand side, we have the seasonal variation in temperature in the lake, both from INSEE2 observations and the lake-wide averages from satellites. And if we then look at the temperature salinity ranges that are preferred by Vibrio cholerae, we find that in the, reported in the literature are the ranges of, that are preferred by Vibrio cholerae. Temperature range from thirty to ten, or the other way around, ten to thirty degrees. And then others have carried out laboratory experiments and concluded that twenty-eight degrees is an optimum temperature for this species of waterborne diseases. But if you now look, come back to Vembenad Lake, we see that this range of thirty, upper limit, is exceeded already in the lake. And the optimum temperature is also exceeded. So, the question is now open, what happens if the temperatures of water bodies increase so much that we exceed the range of preferred conditions for the different types of waterborne diseases? Let me emphasize here that building resilience for the society that Stefano talked about must include building resilience for our ecosystems. Without resilient ecosystems, we don't know how we can sustain our own resilience. And as our ecosystems are undergoing change and are under pressures that they are not used to in the earlier days, it really requires that we study them more closely to see how we can respond to these threats from the water and the threats from changing environmental conditions. So, I don't know how I'm doing for time, maybe another ten minutes, Stefano?
Yes, you, you have another fifteen minutes.
Excellent, thank you. So, to summarize this part of my talk, brief as my overflight has been, I think we can agree that satellites do have much to offer in studies of waterborne and vector bone diseases. But there are possibilities for further improvements if we can bring in new methods, such as artificial intelligence and mathematical and epidemiological models to improve predictions. A key requirement is societal engagement. Without that, whatever breakthrough we might have in science is not going to be effective. And I would like to emphasize that it would be a folly if we were to pretend that remote sensing alone is sufficient. What we need is an integrated approach, and I will come back to that a little more in detail in the next couple of slides. But we do need an integrated approach that will bring in expertise from a variety of topics. And networking is important because scientists tend to specialize and we look at our own special set of problems. We need to talk to scientists working on other aspects of the problem if we are to make further improvements. So, in general then, we need capacity building to reach the stated goal of space for capacity building in the 21st century. So, what capacity do we need to build? Now, I have a problem, I just don't know how to get rid of, maybe if I do this, oh, yes, I should have figured that out sooner, okay. I could not get rid of those slide panels, side panels. So, what capacity do we need to build? Remote sensing offers several ways to help address the problem, but not everyone is aware of what's possible. So, we need better dissemination of information, and that requires training and meetings. And these meetings have to be interdisciplinary. As I noted before, the problem is complex, and we need an integrated approach. That means that the remote sensing scientists have to work with the other disciplines, including microbiologists, geneticists, modelers, health workers, social workers, and all have to come together to reduce the risk. So, that means from a capacity building point of view, we need networking, we need new technology. For example, the use of smartphone apps, artificial intelligence, and others. The more we learn, the more we understand that we need more data to learn more, to understand the new mysteries that emerge. That means capacity building has to include more research and more data mining. This, quite often, we have data, but not everybody can access the data. Community engagement is key. It's not enough if we do a little remote sensing development. The people involved, the local people, they have to understand the relevance of what we are doing and why we are doing it. And one of the strategies has to be citizen science and also stakeholder engagement. Many of the problems that we are talking about here, such as waterborne diseases, they are more acute in tropical developing countries. So, we need infrastructure, training, and exchange of personnel. And the research findings with suitable precautionary measures built in have to be made operational. So, we need to go from research to end-to-end systems that lead to effective warning systems with stakeholder engagement. So, we have taken small steps in that direction. We have just started, initiated a new project called ONWARD. It is led by Brazil, Milton Campbell is the PI. And you can't see it because of interference. But ONWARD stands for Open Network for Water-Related Diseases. It's funded by the UK, and it is dedicated to developing an open network of interested scientists and stakeholders and to promote multidisciplinary work through improved networking and so on. I urge anyone who is interested in joining and becoming part of this open network to send a message to this address here, with the text "ONWARD" membership on the subject line. So, you can be part of whatever we are able to develop in this two-year project. Also, as part of the project in India, we have started looking at, we have started developing an epidemiological model to bring in a proper predictive capability to the satellite-based findings. So, this puts cholera bacteria at the center, and it has, brings in the people, susceptible infected and recovered population, and how the interaction is determined through water, clean water or contaminated water sanitation conditions, and the environmental conditions that might favor or disfavor the growth of cholera in the water. We have also started a citizen science program. As part of the project, we have developed a pocket-sized SIKI disk developed by an Italian scientist in the 19th century that can be used by anyone to look at water clarity and water color. And the response to our call for participation was overwhelming in the initial stages. Two-hundred-and-fifty university students, along with their lecturers from sixteen institutions, participated in the training program, and they are still providing data, except for the time when the COVID restrictions prevented data collection. But these are small steps, and capacity building is a huge task. And we need a large number of steps to be taken if we are to reach the target. So, based on our earlier experiences, I have listed here some general principles on what we might think about in the context of capacity building. One is, there is no single approach that would solve all the requirements. So, we need a variety of approaches and a variety of players. It would be fallacious to imagine that we are trying to bridge a north-south divide. There are, both sides have much to learn from each other. And the sooner we realize that, the better would it work. The effort has to be sustained and long-term. If we can make it sustained and long-term, and here I mean multiple decades, then you have a cascading effect and sustainability in the capacity can be achieved. Success often, or in fact always, requires or depends on inspirational leaders. But then it raises the question, how do we identify them? Then, capacity building would be most effective if it is tailored to the needs of the recipient. But at the same time, the recipient and the donor have to be well-matched. And it's important to emphasize human capacity building. One of the giants of Indian oceanography, Professor N.K. Paniker, made this statement, I'm told, he said, "Instruments and ships rust, so you have to invest in people." But when we invest in people, the attrition rate can be high. So, it raises the next question, how can we minimize it? We have to, I think, accept that there will always be some level of attrition. But if we can find the right leaders, then a small level of attrition can be tolerated. I mentioned that if you have a sustained effort, you can have a cascading influence. And here is another example from India, the same Professor Paniker I mentioned earlier, recommended a professor, Professor Ennar Menon to Professor Kine in Germany for a study in Helgoland. Professor Menon stayed there for three years, came back to be a professor at Kuchin University in India. He taught many graduate students. One of them is Dr. Nandini Menon, who might be actually listening in on our session today, and who now organizes training courses in her own right. And so, you see that a handful of people at the top, and given sufficiently long time, you see that the cascading effect engages and influences a large number of people, and the capacity becomes sustained. This is only one example, there are others who will say that their life was changed for the positive by the influence of a single mentor. And it's also important to recognize that capacity development is not just about science. Success requires that collaboration reaches out across cultural barriers. More than colleagues, we actually need friends if we are to walk that extra mile, or if we are oceanographers to sail the seas, we need friends. In one of the capacity building initiatives that I was engaged in, which involved the Japanese Nippon Foundation, along with the Partnership for Observation of the Global Oceans, Nippon Foundation insists that in their training, cultural sensitivity and engagement is as important as the science, and they use the expression "eating from the same bowl." And capacity building should be structured in such a way as to be rewarding for both sides. If it is a chore on one side and the benefit is all on the other side, it would be difficult to sustain it. But if it is structured right, the activities can be intellectually stimulating. Some of the people I've known who have done these kind of activities say that it can be a life-changing experience, not just for the trainees, but for the teachers as well. And I would like to conclude by saying a few words about Trevor Platt. Scientist and teacher. Sorry. He has left a legacy of trained scientists all across the world in Asia, Latin America, Africa, not to mention Europe and North America. He has fostered international collaboration in the context of large international bodies as such as GEO and that Stefano mentioned in his talk and the Partnership for Observation of the Global Oceans. But he's also moved collaboration at the international level from the grassroots level with their initiatives such as Croatia and Safari that I don't have time to go into in detail. Training programs that he has set up has, I'm told, now led to more than a thousand people being trained over the last couple of decades. And I dedicate this talk to him and I will stop you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Shuba, for this very inspiring talk. And really your contribution, I think it's really valuable to anybody that is involved in environmental activities as well as capacity building for creating a better living for all on this planet. I now take the occasion to pass the word to Antonio Martello and then I'll come back to you, Shuba, for the final concluding panel altogether. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Shuba. Thank you, Stefano. Give me one second so I can share my screen.
Also, Antonio, we cannot see you, so please turn on also your camera if you can.
Okay, yes, I think now.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, can you see also my presentation? Could you just confirm?
Perfect, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so so what I would like to present here today is how collaborative approaches and concurrent engineering in particular can be used within the framework of capacity building and the benefits they can provide. But first, I would like to briefly mention some of the current trends and methods and tools just to put collaborative engineering and concurrent engineering into context. So the current trends and digitalization, automation and a variety of technologies are changing not just the way that we have traditionally worked, but also the way that our organizations structure themselves and what they need to focus on. This is something that we can readily see within the framework of industry four dot zero and it's analogous space four dot zero, which is more specific to the space industry where new methods, processes and technologies are being introduced to adapt to this ongoing change and this ongoing challenge. So the objective, of course, is to make things better, to make them faster, to make them cheaper. And increasingly, there is a stronger and stronger focus on the customer and his needs more than ever before, more than has been traditionally the case. So hypotheses such as open innovation, which focuses on creating more value through the corporation of the free exchange of ideas or design to produce, which is a process that intends to create a seamless production change, starting already with a digital design of components and systems at the very start of the of the production chain. Or techniques such as 3D printing, which support rapid prototyping as well as additional capabilities compared to previous manufacturing methods are just some of the concepts and methods that are being integrated into organizations today. And probably you know a few that are already working a lot with these kind of technologies and methods. But then there are the methodologies and processes, mostly adaptive. Maybe you are more familiar with the term agile. So these adaptive or agile methodologies have gained and continue to gain a lot of importance. They started being developed already fifty years ago, depending on which one you're looking at. But they have gained a lot of importance in the last decade or two. Things like lean design, which is based on the Toyota production system and which focuses on optimizing the use of resources. Or design thinking, which is used mostly by designers, although not only, and is applied to developing new products and services. And again, puts a lot of their focus on the customer. And of course, there are others that you might be familiar with, such as Scrum, which is more of a computer science-based methodology and is widely used in programming today. These are just some of these agile methodologies that are yeah, are being more and more used in different organizations and different companies. But overall, what many of these methodologies and trends have is that they are trying to get greater efficiency and develop better products through communication and collaboration, increasing the communication and collaboration at every level, both at the digital level, which is obviously part of the digitalization process, but also at a personal communication and collaboration level with the new internet technologies. It becomes easier and easier to communicate and collaborate even between institutions and of course, within international institutions, right? Of course, a higher innovation footprint is another element that they consider. But also, for example, as we saw with lean, reduced use of resources and obviously always again with a higher involvement on the side of the customer. And this is where concurrent engineering comes in. Concurrent engineering is a methodology that is interdisciplinary in nature and it's mostly used for conceptual and rapid design in space. Its origins are actually from the manufacturing industry back in the eighties, basically. But today aerospace and particularly the space companies use it widely for their feasibility analysis and for their high-level designs. Sorry, I apologize. So the way that this works, I don't want to go into a lot of detail. But the way that concurrent engineering operates is by making all of the relevant disciplines to any design, whatever system that you want to make. You make sure that all the experts, all the areas that need to be represented are represented in that study, normally we conduct this through studies. And also that we have the customer present. So depending on the organization, we work a little different. But just so you can have a picture of it. Say, for example, in ESA, they would invite all of these experts to come in for a couple of days in a week. They would also have the customer present. And they would all be able therefore to communicate directly personally by voice. And then there is a number of systems and methods that they use. Of course, a streamlined process which supports the communication and having a moderator who facilitates the talks, not deviating from the interesting topics. But also model-based systems engineering, which is basically just like you could picture Google Docs. It's a centralized document or a centralized database where people can populate the information that they need. So everyone has access. So again, the focus is communication, the focus is communication at every layer, at the personal layer, at the software layer, at the data layer. And this is all with the yeah, ultimately, the goal is to have a common understanding with a cut only for the customer and for the for the experts. Yeah, you want to have a common understanding throughout the whole process. And this facilitates a more effective, more productive way of working. Some numbers that are out there place, for example, the time of work of a early design phase in ESA at a quarter of the time and half the price of what traditional methodologies would have taken. So just to give a first understanding of what this methodology entails and what you have to do in it. So concurrent engineering is again not a new thing, it's been around for quite a while. The first, the first organization to use it in space was NASA in JPL. This was over twenty-five, thirty years ago. And since then, there have been a lot of concurrent engineering centers. This is what we call those centers that apply concurrent engineering and have a specific area for them. They have become more and more prevalent, not only in the United States, but internationally in Europe. It was imported around twenty years ago by Estec, by Parisa. And since then, it has again grown in popularity across Europe with centers not only now in organizations such as DLR, but also in many companies like Airbus and even universities who are using it to train their students and to provide an easy way to or a very convenient way to teach systems, thinking and systems design. Just for your appreciation of what this entails, these are the kind of facilities that we are talking about. This is ESA CDF, which is a relatively big facility. DLR CEF, for instance, is a more modest, more compact concurrent engineering facility. Their uses are slightly different, but I don't want to go greatly into detail. So maybe now you're wondering, okay, if to implement this, you need these big areas, big spaces with a lot of computers and media. Well, this is probably very expensive and you would be right in that. But to apply concurrent engineering, you can, you don't need necessarily to spend so much. You can actually approach it from a lean point of view. This, which I show you now, is actually the C to go. It's literally just a pack with a few elements, including a router, some processors and a switch. And then students can bring their own laptops and interconnect. And with that and a software layer such as model-based systems engineering, OCDT is the one that is being developed by ESA, virtual satellite is the one that we use at DLR. A lot of these are open source. You can have students or small organizations using concurrent engineering at a virtually negligible cost. So smaller organizations can benefit from this. They would actually attain similar benefits to larger-scale facilities such as ESA CDF or DLR's CEF. Because the greatest asset once again is the people, like it's the capacity of integrating ideas or integrating different expertises and coming to an agreement on what is the way forward to solve a problem. And they could be assisted through this kind of setup to their own designs and the prototyping, to do it faster, to do it cheaper, to do it even more consistently, since again, that is the basis of the communication part. And can support potential technology leapfrogs. And an emphasis that I would put for this talk, since we're talking of capacity building, would be its potential for international collaboration. And what do we mean by this? Concurrent engineering is evolving. Right now, there are a variety of trends on it. One of them is supporting designs within space, not only for the early phases, but also on later phases. This would not be done in the way that I have described before, because you can't locate everyone that you might need in a single room, once you have a lot of people involved. But rather through what is called collaborative engineering, which is an extension of concurrent engineering and is very relevant right now with our current situation of COVID, because everyone is working from home. Collaborative engineering would be the idea of you can work remotely, but with all the information in the same place. You would have a Google Docs-style tools and you would have a process that streamlines the way that people can work remotely and the way that you can design remotely. And that is the, in a nutshell, what collaborative engineering is about. But there's another one, which is more focused on international cooperation, which is expanding this concept into a multi-CC, multi-concurrent engineering centers approach for projects. This would mean that with certain agreements between organizations, you could basically break down any complex system, say again, a satellite. And different organizations could apply their expertise in different areas. You could have a smaller organization that is an expert on payloads, maybe, involved doing the payload, while maybe a bigger organization, which is more capable of performing good analysis or a great or a good design at a bigger system level, at a bus level like ESA, fulfilling that and have studies where they collaborate remotely and they work together remotely. And this also helps to to overcome one of the challenges, because as I was mentioning, a lean approach would be an inexpensive approach. But it would be limited in the processing capabilities, it might be limited in the tools you can use. So a possible solution for this is CCs in a corporation. If a smaller organization that might not want or be able to invest so much in building a highly capable concurrent engineering center gets into an agreement with, say, ESA, then ESA could do the heavy lifting, to say it in some way. They could do the processing aspects, they could potentially support them with the tools remotely. So this actually would again be a very positive way of working for capacity building in my estimation. And of course, there are some technical and logistical issues that I want to to bring up in this conversation, which be technically, of course, internet would be essential to this kind of collaboration or to any type of collaboration. And then there's the compatibility of systems. But again, this would be just a mention, I don't want to go into it, since it would depend on the on the organizations involved. And then the logistical issues, which would be more political in nature, such as agreement of collaboration and knowledge transfer are issues that would have to be studied further before you can you can work this way. But it is not an impossibility, obviously. So in conclusion, and not to prolong the talk, I think it's better if we have more time for questions and even discussion than for me to endlessly talk about concurrent engineering as I potentially could. I just want to say that any organization can benefit of this again, because the way that it's organized and since the focus is on the people, the setup is secondary. It is going to impact performance, but it is not an absolute limitation to this use. And the whole emphasis of this approach is to connect ideas, to facilitate communication. So as long as you have a space that you can use for a certain amount of time, as long as you can have access to a few laptops and a local area network, you can basically go from there. The 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 community of concurrent engineering is quite open, there's a lot of exchange of information. There is free tools to use and a lot of freeware and software that can be accessed. So yeah, that that should not be an impediment for anyone who is interested in following this approach. Yeah, and that's the point here, that there is no need to duplicate these large facilities. If you don't want to invest or you cannot invest, you can already use what's there and collaborate with these facilities for bigger projects. So yes, my final point is for anyone interested in following this or trying to come up with this, an approach that you can follow is to build up your own lean CEF, try it out and try to collaborate with other bigger facilities or more experienced facilities and benefit for their expertise and infrastructure. And this, I think, would be the key message in this context of collaboration and of capacity building. And yeah, that would be basically all I want to say about this. So thank you very much for your attention and of course, I'm open to questions or to initiating the dialogue. I guess I'll leave this up to Stefano. initiating the dialogue. Uh, I guess I'll leave this up to Stefano.
Thank you very much, Antonio. Excellent presentation, really to the point, uh, with a very good overview of, uh, uh, both the new technologies and innovation, uh, options that we have, as well as, uh, uh, an in-depth dive, let's say, in, in concurrent engineering. Uh, now, uh, yeah, now, uh, I would like to start, uh, with, uh, some questions, uh, to the, to the panel. So the first question I would like to, to address to all of you, um, to warm up a little bit, is coming from Suleiman Sadiku. Uh, the question is, uh, well, first of all, congratulations from his side for the presentations. And then he's asking, uh, on capacity building in space technology development and applications. So it's for both of you. Uh, what level of academic and professional qualifications are on offer? Uh, he's asking at these institutions, but I would be probably more, more broad. I mean, I think there are several options, uh, uh, to, to learn, uh, not only, especially now we see with, uh, massive open online courses or with other opportunities. So for instance, Antonio, if someone wants to get acquainted with, um, like concurrent engineering and with the innovative design methodologies you mentioned, is there a way to start, uh, that you would, you would recommend? You mentioned some open source, uh, you mentioned some options.
Yeah, um, at, at the, at the level of software, there's definitely options. Uh, you can, of course, uh, just look for, uh, CDP four, which is provided by RIA and it's become open source. It's a tool that is used in some, uh, parts of industry such as, uh, uh, OHB actually is going to start using that software from now on. Virtual Satellite, which is the DLR developed one, is also, um, open source. It's, uh, available on GitHub. Um, and there are other options out there. Um, some of them are Excel based. I'm not sure of the situation with ESA SoCDT. I know that for the community, it's open source. I don't know, or at least available. I don't know if it is available to everyone. That would be something that would have to be looked at. But so to understand better how this operates at the software level and how these models, uh, work, that would not be an issue at all. Um, to understand better the, what concurrent engineering is and how it works, there is also readily available papers and a lot of open sites, which explain the concept and explain even some of the results that have been achieved in academia. Um, to learn concurrent engineering on your own is impossible, really, in my estimation. Because to really understand it, you have to be able to collaborate with a number of people and see how, um, the system is operated and how changes in one, uh, domain will affect all the others. So that has to be done in groups. Uh, universities have been doing it for a while. We, DLR Bremen, uh, does a course for University of Bremen. So there are courses, there are options. ESA, I know, also provides certain courses on the topic, uh, where it gets students together or young professionals together. Um, but of course, again, it's a collaboration thing. You can't literally learning on, on your own, because you need the practice and you need to see it in action.
If I, if I may add, as a, as a user myself, and, uh, I remember at the time at the International Space University, they also have a small, uh, CDF there for training of students and then so on. So yes, there are plenty of opportunities. And I, I believe that, uh, remember that also in your chapter in the book, that there are quite some references and links. So I really suggest for anybody to maybe further contact you and maybe go also through the, the references you have put there.
Of course.
Thank you very much. And Shuba, what do you, what would you say about, about this, uh, uh, concerning, uh, the, the question of Suleiman? More on the space application side, let's say.
Yes, I think I would emphasize what both of you have already said, that, um, there are a lot of opportunities these days for, oh, attending or participating in training courses that are aimed at various levels. Uh, you mentioned the MOOC ESA and UMSAD had MOOCs on these topics. There, um, but UMSAD has various training courses. And with the technology advancing, there are more and more possibilities to attend these courses remotely, which has become important in today's climate. Um, so I don't think your starting level should be a point of worry. There are courses that will address you from whichever starting point you want to start from. What is really required is a commitment from your side to learn and improve, because that's what capacity building is all about.
Thank you. Thank you, Shuba. Uh, maybe I want to add also another element to what was said, which is networking. And, uh, at this time, we see that a lot of conferences are taking place, uh, online, uh, in a virtual format. But there are, uh, opportunities to exchange also through these, uh, virtual formats. So that's also a way to, to learn about, uh, about capacity building. I mean, we all know in the old times, uh, with physical conferences, the networking part is one of the most important, where you really have the opportunity to interact, to see how your research is, uh, going, uh, along with the one of another fellow that maybe you didn't know before, uh, going to that specific conference. Now, with, with the virtual, uh, conferences, uh, being available, there is even, uh, I would say, an oversupply of, of, uh, of this. So you have to be careful to select, uh, the topic that you really want to, to dive into, not to, to be dispersive, let's say. But at the same time, uh, there is a great offering, which is very often for free, so also at no cost it comes, provided that you have, uh, tools in place. As Antonio mentioned, the connectivity is a topic, uh, we also looked into from a policy perspective, because, uh, yes, without, uh, proper connectivity, uh, we, we cannot do the things that, uh, we would like to do here in, in capacity building. All right, uh, we have, uh, also a few other questions. Um, so, uh, for example, uh, what could be the, a strategy to strengthen the role of African emerging space agencies in Earth's observations through capacity building, technology transfer and services co-creation with the aim of facilitating the implementation and monitoring of African development agenda? Uh, now on the, on the possibilities, uh, of course, uh, we have to, to mention here, uh, the GMES and Africa program, which is, uh, I would say quite a comprehensive program of the European Union, together with the African Union, uh, that was following the, the joint meeting in Lisbon a few years back. Uh, but there are also a number of, of projects, uh, and Shuba can elaborate a bit on that. Uh, because, uh, many, uh, programs, uh, many projects within, for example, even the climate change initiative, uh, are really tackling challenges that are global. So for instance, when you talk about the ocean, I mean, the, the, the status of the ocean and the, and the coastlines, uh, it's, it's really a, a global issue. And, uh, the rising sea level, for instance, and also the, the water quality near the coastline and so on. So all these issues are somehow tackled by projects. And, uh, in many of these projects, uh, there are users from, uh, different, uh, different countries, different geographies. Uh, so in a way, the, the issues are uniting, uh, if you want the efforts from even different regions of, of the world. Would you like to elaborate a bit, Shuba, on this?
Yes, Stefano, thank you. Indeed, um, the one of the advantages of, uh, remote sensing is that we can go global. So in that respect, the Africa is not excluded. And, uh, what we hope is that there will be more and more trained personnel from the African countries who can take charge of what we can think of as your patrimony. The seas around you, they belong to you. And it's only with, uh, information and knowledge that you can, uh, take responsibility for effective stewardship of your environment, where the care for the environment has to go hand in hand with the applications, which is what sustainable development goals are all about. But in addition to this general fact that remote sensing data are available globally without discrimination, uh, as Stefano has mentioned, there are initiatives aimed through GMES towards Africa. There are, as for example, in my own lab at Plymouth Marine Lab, a number of projects that are targeting Asian countries. I'm not personally involved in any of them at the moment. But if you would like to drop me an email, I will certainly try to put you in touch with people who are. And these initiatives, um, they do have training courses and so on, targeted at the African community.
Thank you, Shuba, for your answer. I would now go, uh, to a question from Angola. Uh, maybe Antonio, you can, uh, help with this question. So the, the question is, uh, what is the role of best practices in space capacity building? And to be more specific, lessons learned in more developed countries. So for instance, at the CEF facility of DLR, can they be replicated in emerging economy? And how do you take into account, in this case, local national capacity building, uh, needs?
Um, okay, interesting question. Um, well, uh, on the face of it, yes, of course, lessons learned is nothing more than what it says, lessons learned. So, um, not of, not all of them will be applicable. Some lessons learned will be specific to a given organization, to a given way of working, to a given project even, or line of work. But, uh, many of the lessons learned in any project will be, um, highly applicable to anyone. Um, to put this into, into perspective with an example. Um, say that, uh, as I was said, kind of promoting to some degree, if you decided to work in collaborative concurrent engineering way, you decided to set up a small infrastructure, a few laptops and, uh, and then, um, and start doing, uh, work in a re- relatively concurrent engineering way, even if you haven't done it before. Um, you could definitely benefit from the experience of others and the mistakes that others have made and their lessons learned. That is how concurrent engineering has kind of moved around Europe, for instance. Like DLR, when they started their own facility, they talked with ESA, they, they, they understood from ESA what problems they have had, what perspectives they can give, what lessons they had learned. And in that regard, absolutely, you can learn from others. Um, there will be, of course, certain, um, characteristics inherent to any organization or country or culture that will have to be taken into consideration. You can't extrapolate necessarily everything that happens in one place to any other place in the world. But technical considerations, for starters, uh, will, for the most part, be the same. And for non-technical ones, well, a lot of the, a, a lot of the con- concerns that will come from interacting with people will be mostly the same anywhere you are. Uh, if, uh, you learn, for example, that, uh, it is important to have someone who coordinates the work and who can moderate the talk, that is going to be for sure similar in Europe than is going to be in South America. Uh, then of course, these again have to be looked at by the people who best understand their own culture. But, um, other than that, yes, absolutely, lessons learned is something we should all be sharing amongst each other, because we can always learn from each other.
Maybe Antonio, as a further question, this is a bit coming from my side, thinking of what you just mentioned. If a country wants to develop, let's say, a space mission, and now since you are involved in so many feasibility studies, from which expertise would you start to put, uh, as we, as we have heard from you, you put the different expertise around the table, uh, to do concurrent engineering. So which, from which one would you start in a, let's say, a small setting, kind of a university or, or a small company, uh, that wants to, to, to develop a space mission?
Uh, from a single domain, from a single area of expertise?
Yeah, we, which, which, uh, areas, in your opinion, are essential, which experts are essential?
Okay, okay, which experts?
Yeah.
Okay, for, for satellites, uh, it's, it's pretty standard in general. Of course, the first thing is payload, who is developing the payload? Is it a scientific payload? Is it a technological demonstrator payload? Uh, that would be scientists in general, uh, for the most part, otherwise technologists. Um, but then for the rest of the spacecraft, if you're referring to that, um, those are typically always the same ones. It's someone who understands power and, uh, solar power and batteries. Someone who understands structure, because there are a lot of, uh, elements that you have to consider, like the launching is going to introduce a lot of loads onto any system and you have to be able to survive it. Someone who understands computation, uh, because you have to have an onboard computer that can uh, interface with all the electronic components and, and manage the mission. Uh, someone who understands communication, because again, whatever you do in space, you have to be able to transmit down to Earth and you have to be able to receive instructions from Earth. And then probably someone who can understand about AOCs, so attitude control and, uh, also mission. So who can understand how orbits work, uh, what kind of contacts you're gonna have. These are the most essential ones. Then, of course, you can always, uh, build this up and include, um, domains such as risk analysis and costing. And of course, these things will be uh, eventually more than necessary. And of course, good to have from the beginning. People who know how to integrate systems, that's also one. Um, and I would consider it essential to have some, someone with a good systems view. Someone who under- fully understands what happens when you change things in one or another area. That is the whole point of systems. Uh, that if you change, um, the way that, if, if you change your payload, how is it gonna affect the whole rest of the system? If you change this, how is it gonna cha- uh, affect that? So there's expertise is, is required, uh, or at least, uh, people who have some understanding of all of these aspects.
Thank you very much, Antonio. I think this can be quite helpful for, for the ones that wants to enter into this, uh, realm. Thanks. Uh, Shuba, I have a question for you, uh, on, uh, on the still from, uh, from Angola. So, uh, do you have local dialogue structures or mechanism to listen and gather requirements to local user needs? And perhaps you can elaborate a bit on your experience, uh, in India that you, you referred to in your presentation. And also a follow-up question from Brazil. Uh, are you working in Brazil? Well, yes, I would say you mentioned already the onward, uh, project.
Yes.
But maybe you can say a few words, uh, to our Brazilian friend, uh, on, on this. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I, I was, all right, so, um, how do we take the pulse of the people? Um, the social engagement events that I touched upon briefly, they were designed for that. Um, so that we can hear what they think and what their requirements are. And so we can adjust our thinking to their needs. The sci- what was the uh, citizen science project that we initiated was also, uh, designed to draw in the user community. So that in, at least from one point of view, they begin to see the magnitude of what scientists are trying to do, so they can reach us halfway. And if they understand what we are trying to do, then maybe they will also pay attention to whatever solution we might propose. Um, one of the things we are putting into place as part of, uh, this social engagement is a smartphone app in which we can ask the people the questions and then use that to design a solution. So then you have to ask, okay, if we are asking them to take the time, take the time to answer questions on an app, then what do they get in return? So what they would should get in return is a more flexible and dynamic response to crises. For example, if we can collect information on their condition of sanitation or threats from flooding, are they in very low waters, very low-lying lands, and think information such as that. And if they are using smartphones, they can update their information on a regular basis. So the community, the people in charge would have an up-to-date information on who might be under threat whenever there is a natural disaster or whatever, so they can target their responses in that way. So there are many ways in which we can engage with the user community. I'm sure that these are only a small fraction of what might be possible. If I could also answer an earlier question, and I didn't touch upon this in my answer, about training opportunities and lessons learned. I think one of the lessons we have learned is that capacity building initiatives have a higher chance of success if we give the initiative to those who want the capacity building. For example, the question was raised about Africa. So if you, from the African side, if you can analyze your needs and then take it further, who do you know who can give you that training you need? How many people need the training? Is it just you or is it a number of people? Is it just your country or all your neighbors? And if you do this initial analysis yourself, then the training can be adjusted to your needs. If it is a one-person requirement, maybe the simplest solution would be to make use of an opportunity to go somewhere else and get the training. If there is a critical mass of people who want the training in-house, then we should think about sending an expert to you. But ultimately, the identification of the requirements has to come from the whoever needs the capacity building. So you have to identify the capacity building needed and whom I provide it and how you might want it. And if you have a clear idea of what is your requirement, then there are opportunities out there. I mentioned the Partnership for Observation of the Global Oceans. If you go to their website, you'll see that they offer a number of opportunities for capacity building. You might find one that is just right for you. If not, there are other ways of finding what you need. And to go back to Brazil, yes, our partner in Brazil is Milton Campbell. I saw that he is attending this webinar. So in as part of the ONWARD project, we have some training programs planned for Brazil. And if I don't know if we can get Milton to say anything more.
I guess he can probably write something in the chat.
Okay. And Milton is another example of that sustained capacity building that we were talking about, you know. Milton, we have known him since he was a student. And now he is in INPE in Brazil. And so now we turn to him for help when we need it. And he is in a position to help people in his country. And next year, he is going to send one of his students to us here in Plymouth. So once that initial barrier is breached and you get a leader in a country, then it has this effect of perpetual growth.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Shuba. Maybe I can just add one element to capacity building activities, which, in my view, is really learning by doing. And I want to to say that, summing up a bit what both you and Antonio already mentioned. Learning by doing is is now really at reach with digital technologies. Having someone, for instance, connected to a CDF session, they can really learn by doing, maybe designing a small subsystem of a payload, but then they see the big picture and also the complexity of building the entire system, how the other people are interacting. And so this is really a way to accelerate also the learning. And the other aspect is that, as you mentioned, Shuba, the the connections between the people in the end are really the key element. And the digital technologies are empowering these connections. We can virtually be together even when, let's say, there is some distance, physical distance among us, between us. So this is a a great element that, if it's properly leveraged, can really accelerate space capacity building in in this century, I would say, compared maybe to to the previous century. I see that we have, we have now really just one minute. So I would like to leave to both of you, if you want to say any concluding remarks or any concluding words before we, because I think we'll be cut off in in two minutes.
Who is going first?
Please, Shuba.
I see that Lilian Krug, who is from the Partnership for Observation of the Global Oceans, or POGO for short, is one of the participants. And if you haven't seen it, please check the website that she has given, so you can see all the POGO training opportunities. I see that Milton's also replied. Thank you, Milton. But to close, then, I'd just like to thank the organizers, Jose, Stefan, for giving me this opportunity to participate in this. And thank you for all the participants, for your kind interventions and for all your encouraging remarks and your stimulating questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Shuba. Now, Antonio, last words from your side?
Yes, well, I think Shuba said it all. So thank you, Shuba. That is basically what I would also say. Thank you to the organization for inviting me. And I hope everyone enjoyed the talk. I certainly did.
So I would like now to conclude and particularly to thank Shuba and Antonio for really being here with us today to give their special views and insights in space capacity building. I also would like to really thank all the participants and the one that actively even challenged us with with their questions. And finally, last but not least, thanks to COSA and to the Air Centre for really creating this fantastic dialogue platform that virtually allows us to to meet every Friday with different experts in different fields. So thanks to to everybody, and I wish you very fruitful space capacity building in the 21st century. Have a good afternoon. Bye.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye.